The regular city council meeting this evening. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Williams.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that all of us have enjoyed this day. And we thank you for this Christmas season and for the reason for the season. We ask that, Lord, you be with us tonight as we conduct the city's business. We ask, Father, for wisdom, and we ask, Father, that you would be with each one of us. And may the words of our mouth and the meditation of our hearts be acceptable in your sight, Lord. And, Lord, we just ask that when we leave this place, you give us traveling mercies and take care of each and every one of us and our families. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Councilmember Saunders has advised that he will not be able to be with us this evening. I believe he's ill. With that, we will move on to special guests and announcements. The first item on that agenda is a special guest, the employee of the month, which is Officer Walter White. If you could please come stand in front of the crowd.
Just get over a little bit, and I'm going to embarrass you by reading some of this. So this is a proclamation naming Officer Walter White as the mayor's employee of the month for November 2019 and declaring December 17th, 2019, to be Walter White Day in the city of Mammel. Whereas Officer White has served with the Mammel Police Department since September 2017. And whereas on November 21st, 2019, Officer White was off duty in Arkadelphia when he witnessed a head-on collision that killed the drivers of the vehicles and resulted in one of the vehicles catching fire. Whereas Officer White rushed to the burning vehicle and putting his own safety at risk helped a 16-year-old escape the vehicle. Whereas Officer White returned to the vehicle and put himself in direct harm and danger to rescue an eight-year-old whose leg was trapped and on fire to escape the burning vehicle. Whereas the actions of Officer White are honorable, brave, heroic, and truly exemplify and embody the character and heroism found in a first responder. Now therefore, I, Caleb Norris, Mayor of Mammel, on this 16th day of December, with great honor and privilege, do hereby declare Officer Walter White to be the mayor's employee of the month for November 2019, and I hereby proclaim December 17th, 2019, to be Walter White Day in the city of Mammel. Let's get a good picture.
That's impressive.
Thank you for your service. Thank you, Paul. You want a picture? Come on up. We insist. Speech? Can we get a photograph there, Captain I?
I don't even know you. I don't even know you.
Thank you.
That was impressive. Will the state do something for him as well?
Thank you to the Mammel Police Department who have all shown up tonight.
And their shop with the cop event was great.
And their shop with the cop event was great, I'm told. The next order of business is from announcement from, well, review from the Metro Little Rock Alliance, who we've got Mr. Ben France here with us this evening. Mr. France, would you like to come up and tell us what y'all are doing these days?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. My name's Ben France. I'm the Vice President of Economic Development for the Little Rock Regional Chamber. Metro Little Rock Alliance, if you're not aware, is a 12-county economic development entity that its sole purpose is marketing and attraction to outside companies to move here and invest in, invest here in the metro Little Rock area. So it's, you know, when we go out there and market Little Rock, we don't just market, you know, one town or one county. We market the entire region because when we say there's a million people in Metro Little Rock Alliance, it says a lot more than just saying there's, you know, 200,000 from the city of Little Rock or, you know, 50,000 from the city of Little Rock or 60,000 from the city of Conway. So we use that $1 million measuring stick when we go, 1 million people measuring stick when we go out there and visit with companies. So last year, I talked, I don't know if you remember, we did a whole new branding strategy last year, a marketing strategy, and we have implemented that strategy in 2019. We hired an economic development-based marketing agency called DCI out of New York, who's got a lot of contacts in economic development. And we hired them to help us with our marketing. And the first kind of initiative was a new website. And so we implemented a new website in 2019, metrolittlerockalliance.com. It was based on a kind of our branding strategy. We used Metro Little Rock Alliance. So there's sites on the Metro Little Rock Alliance. There's the new Mammel Select site is on there, so companies can go and look at it. Each county or each city has their individual content information, so Judy Keller's content information is on the website. It's just a way for companies and site consultants to go and look at, look at quality of life, industrial parks, sites, buildings, when they're looking for a new, for a new industrial site or new office building or any other type of kind of non-retail company. So that was kind of the first strategy we did in 2019, was have that new website. We're also doing a lot of digital marketing. So we have, we are working with DCI and doing paid marketing. So we go out there and had advertisements on Google, advertisements on LinkedIn, just, you know, when companies go and search, you know, industrial park, central United States or industrial park or office park, Arkansas, that paid marketing from Google comes up and displays some of the, some of our advertisements about Metro Little Rock Alliance, whether it's low cost of doing business, central location, low cost of living, it's just some of the characteristics that we go out there and try to market Metro Little Rock Alliance to, to outside companies. Kind of the third thing we're doing, in addition to the new website and the digital marketing, if I'll get to it, excuse me, it's going to be here sometime, is we are doing a lot of site selection consulting outreach. So consultants are individuals that are hired by companies that want to do all the due diligence. So if I'm a manufacturer in Chicago and I need to do, and I need a span, I don't want to do, I don't want to do any of the work, so I hire a consultant who does all the, all the site analysis, the workforce analysis, the labor analysis, tax incentive analysis, site analysis, labor analysis. I hire these, they hire these individuals. And so we go out there and market to those, to those individuals. So we hosted a, like we did in 2018, a fam tour. It's short for, for monetization tour. So we had Sid's consultants in Metro Little Rock Alliance in early November and had them visit every community, including Mammel, to give them a sense of what, definitely what Mammel has to offer and what Metro Little Rock Alliance has to offer. Because if we, we can't do this on our own, we have to have a regional approach when we're going out there and marketing to outside companies. Because what's good for Mammel is good for Little Rock and vice versa. And so that's, that's kind of another way we do our site selection outreach, is we also emailed and sent out a lot of e-newsletters to out, to site selectors as well about ongoing news and any, any news or positive activity happening in Little Rock. We go out there and send it to site selection consultants as well. I've been making a lot of trips to Chicago, Atlanta, Dallas, to go out there and market. And when I go out there and market Little Rock, I don't, I don't just market the city, I market the entire region because that's, that's what you have to do in economic development. And so we also created a new marketing collateral, so we created some industrial sell sheets, which we're going to put on, we're going to put the new Mammel, Mammel new select site on our industrial sell sheet going forward as well. So new maps and brochures that we just needed to have done because we didn't have any of those. And then, let's see, and then going forward for 2020, we're going to be kind of doing kind of some similar activities as well. We're going to have another fam tour in 2020. We're going to continue doing our site selector outreach. We're going to continue going out and visiting companies in those larger cities where these consultants are, where the CEOs of companies are. We're also going to go out there and do, continue to do digital marketing, continue to update the website. We're going to actually be bringing in media writers to Little Rock to do media stories on the Metro Little Rock. We had two come in last year. We're planning to have three or four coming in 2020. So, and we're also going to be visiting some trade shows as well, whether it's, whether it's manufacturing shows, trade shows, whether it's tech trade shows. But this is just a, a marketing alliance, and we go out there and try to bring new companies and new, and new, new people to Little Rock. In addition to the marketing, we also, we also subscribe to a workforce development tool that costs about $30,000 a year. And the, the unique situation about Metro Little Rock Alliance is every, every community gets a piece of that, of that, of that workforce development tool because, you know, we all can't pay individually, so when we just pay 30,000, Judy gets a, Judy gets a license and so does every other member gets a license as well. So what you pay goes a whole lot more further than, than just, than just marketing. It goes into workforce development analysis as well. So, but everything's moving forward for 2020. We're continuing to work with DCI out of New York because they're doing a really good job because they, they do this for a living. They focus just on economic development. They don't just do any company. It's, economic development is kind of what their, what their sweet spot is. So, but that's kind of in a nutshell what we've done 2019 or plans for 2020. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on the Alliance.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, sir.
Yes, can you, can you speak to any fruits of your labors, say, in the last year? Have you, your efforts with all this digital marketing and so on and so forth, has it brought some new players to town, new, new folks that have actually moved in and done site selections and stuff?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's, Metro Little Rock is now kind of on the map. You know, we didn't market as much as we should have in the past few years. And now with, with the rev-up marketing, we're seeing, I'm hearing from site selectors about, wow, you guys have a lot of things going on in Metro Little Rock Alliance. So from the announcements in Conway to announcements in Little Rock, and you look at CZ, which is a company that's coming to the port, they're going to be hiring 600 people. And that was a consultant that, that we marketed to and knew about Metro Little Rock and about that site at the port, which we've been marketing for 10 years. And hopefully it takes shorter time to get the new select site filled. But that's just, it's a long game scenario. I mean, it's not an overnight success. It's just building relationships with the consultants so they get familiar with, with Metro Little Rock. And that's why we have these fam tours where they might not have a project in 2020, but they're going to remember Little Rock, and maybe in 2021, something comes around and they'll remember they visited Little Rock. So, I mean, overall, it's been a positive attention to Little Rock or Metro Little Rock, excuse me.
Thank you. Also, if anyone has any questions, one of the first items of new business will be the approval of the, a renewal, basically, of the contract between the city and Metro Little Rock Alliance. Without objection, I'd go ahead and release Mr. France unless the council thinks it'd be helpful to have him here to discuss the contract at that time. Councilmember Mosley?
I will ask you, is this the same amount as we paid in last year?
It is.
Same, same amount?
Correct. We do it based on population. So of course, City Little Rock, Little Rock pays the most and, but it's based on population. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. France, for coming. I know you guys have a Christmas party that you get to...
I can stay for the vote. It's, I don't, it's up to you guys.
It didn't seem like there was any request for you to stay, and Ms. Keller will, of course, be here to answer any questions from our end.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you all, I appreciate it. Happy holidays.
Next order of business is the approval of the minutes from the December 2nd regular meeting. Y'all have received a copy of that. And I've got a motion to approve in a second. Is there any comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. I don't have any public comment cards, so that brings us to the financial statement review. Ms. Vega will go over the November financials, which will, of course, include the Octobers and maybe have some comments about that. Ms. Vega, the floor is yours.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So as I go through and discuss the November slides, which includes, obviously, the October information, I am going to give highlights of October and November to show that we're sustaining some growth. So the next slide, please. This is our, our fund balance budget and how we're comparing. And so far, all three of our funds are over budget compared to prior year. We're, in October, we were, for the sanitation fund, we were 5% over budget, and we've, November, we've grown to 6% over budget. The street fund was flat in October, but has increased to 3% for November. And the general fund was up 13% for October and November. The next slide is the general fund revenue. The city's fund for October was up 1.3% revenue and up 2.2% over November to prior year. The street fund was up 4% in October and is up 3% in November. Sanitation fees, you know, this looks really weird. It's due to timing. The October, we were up 65% over prior year, and in November, we were up 55% to prior year. General fund expenditure, expenses, October, we were up 9%, and it grew a little bit to 10% for November. The pie chart shows that 52% of our budget is spent on, or our expenditures were spent on police and fire. In public works, we spent 5%. Parks, 12%. And city senior services, 5%. This shows that all departments are under budget. At this point in the year, we should have spent 91% of our budget, and everybody is under that threshold. Street fund expenditures are under prior year, 22% for October and November. And sanitation fees, I mean sanitation expenses, they're 1% over prior year for October and November. Does anybody have any questions?
Councilmember Scott?
All of the departments are under budget, and they have to have, what is it, approved invoices by the end of December in order for this money?
It's the purchase orders. They're purchase orders. If they're going to do any expenses that are over $1,000, they have to have a purchase order. Those items have to be ordered before the end of the year in order to be in this year's budget.
How likely is it that that will happen? Pretty likely that...
No, everybody's working really hard to get their, their expenditures in. I'm not aware of anybody that's struggling and that's not prepared for the situation.
Have we generally carried over money from budget year to budget year, and this year we're not? Or is this just...
No. Typically, we have a little bit that gets carried over, and it's, it's usually capital improvements like street overlays, or say, a truck was ordered. I think you remember the senior services, they had the car that was, a grant was given, the car was ordered, and it didn't come in until the following year, and the purchase order didn't get rolled over, and we had to come back to you to get approval to spend that money. Those are the type of circumstances where that happens.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vega. Councilmember Mosley?
One of the auditors expected in on the 2018 audit.
We're still working on that. We've been buried in the budget, and I actually started working on that today.
Okay, so they won't come in until you're ready for them?
Yeah, they can't. Right.
Scheduled a time to come in and start their audit?
No, sir.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Vega, they've actually been here for...
They've done part of the audit. There's still more that has to be done, and our information still isn't ready.
As I understood it, they, they've done everything they can do until we get them the information that they've requested. I believe we've got a substantial amount to them, but there's a few holdups that the new accountant has been chugging away on. So while Ms. Vega hasn't been working on it as much because of the, the focus on the budget, we have had the accountant and then the temp that we had for a month.
That's correct.
Thanks for clarifying that, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad, glad they've at least gotten underway. Thank you.
At this point, I'd entertain a motion to accept the October and November financials. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Vega. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. We've got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. We'll move on to unfinished business. First up is the third reading of ordinance 989 prohibiting the practice of engine compression braking. Madam City Clerk Treacher, if you could read that by title only, please.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammel, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 989, an ordinance prohibiting the practice of engine compression braking and defining this practice as a nuisance pursuant to Chapter 38 of the Mammel City Code and for other purposes.
Out, this is on third reading.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 989.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holt? Councilmember Vaprazan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Gartner?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Mo, motion carries. Ordinance 989 is adopted. Moving on to the third reading of ordinance 990 enacting supplemental provisions of the city code. Madam City Clerk Treacher, if you could read that by title only, please.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammel, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 990, an ordinance adopting and enacting supplemental provisions of the Mammel City Code for the City of Mammel, Arkansas, providing for the manner of amending such code and providing when such code and this ordinance shall become effective.
Motion to approve ordinance 990.
We've got a motion and a second. Just as a reminder, this is the ordinance that basically adopts the city code after we've codified all the ordinances. You can find the code online, and if you have a code book, you can get it updated with the city clerk. And if you don't have a code book, then please reach out, and I'm sure she would be happy to find one for you. So if that, is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holt? Councilmember Vaprazan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Gartner?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance 990 is enacted. I'm sorry, Ms. Williams, did you have your light on? And I bypassed, okay. We'll move on to new business. First order of business is Resolution 2019-43 approving the MLRA contract. Madam City Clerk, if you could read that by title only, please.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammel, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled resolution number 2019-43 approving the Economic Development Service contract between the City of Mammel and Metro Little Rock Alliance.
This is a contract for marketing services. We've heard from Mr. France with MLRA. State law requires that this contract not be automatically renewing, that it come to the city council on an annual basis to be approved. And so that is what we are here for. It's basically the same contract from last year.
Motion to approve Resolution 2019-43.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, sneaky light.
I was going to ask you, Mr. Mayor, what, what your thoughts are on that? Is that, is that a good bang for our buck?
I, I think it is. As, as they mentioned, just the subscription to that database would cost us 30,000 if we tried to do it on our own. I don't, we wouldn't do it on our own, quite frankly. And so it's just information that we wouldn't have available. Ms. Keller, did you care to speak on, on that? She interacts a lot more with them than I do.
Judy Keller, Director of Community and Economic Development. Yes, there's no way. We, we get, we, the contract is $5,011. You can hardly buy an ad in one magazine for that. So we get a lot of bang for the buck. The site visits, they pay those consultants to come sometimes. Sometimes they just pay their expenses. So we, we could never do any of that on our own, not for $5,000.
What's their total budget, do you know?
Oh, gosh, not off the top of my head. But we're one of the, we pay one of the lesser amounts.
I would imagine, I'd guess maybe at least a half a million or something like that?
Oh, I don't think it's that much. Maybe 200,000, but I wouldn't want to, I'll get you the exact amount.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I definitely think we get a lot for that $5,000. We couldn't do a third of it. So, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2019-43. Is there any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. And we'll get that signed. Next up is Resolution 2019-42 approving a contract with Mammel Area Chamber of Commerce. If we could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammel, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled resolution number 2019-42 approving the Economic Development Service contract between the City of Mammel and the Mammel Area Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Y'all should have a copy of the, the updated contract. The only sentence in there that is different, it was at your desk, is the last sentence in payment for services rendered that says specifically that the city shall provide and place two banners on Mammel Boulevard for each event for the business expo and bash on the Boulevard. There were some issues about when the city would be charging for banners for the Chamber of Commerce and when they wouldn't. And so we just wanted to flesh out when we would cover that and when they had to pay for those banners. This is basically the same sort of contract, smaller fee, with the Mammel Area Chamber of Commerce. They were, Ms. Alicia was not available this evening. But with that, I'd entertain a motion to...
To approve Resolution 2019-42.
Thank you. Mr. Mosley?
Yes, you say the amount went down from last year?
Well, it's, no, the amount didn't go down. I think it's the same amount. It's just not nearly as high as the MLRA contract.
Oh, okay.
The price is $2,500, not 5,000.
Yeah, it's about the same we had last year, I assume.
I think it's identical, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Is there any, we do have a motion and a second. I should write that stuff down. Is there any additional questions, comments, concerns, or discussion? Seeing none, I'd entertain a, how about this? Since we have the motion, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Resolution, next up is Resolution 2019-46 expressing support for Academics Plus Charter School. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammel, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled resolution number 2019-46, a resolution in support of the Mammel Charter School in the City of Mammel and for other purposes.
Mammel Charter School is here, or is requesting an extension of their charter and to add more folks. But Mr. Rob McGill is here. Mr. McGill, would you like to explain to the council what's going on here tomorrow?
Rob McGill, CEO of Academics Plus Charter Schools, Inc., 600 Edgewood. Yeah, right one. Make sure you got the right building. Yes, tomorrow, we're actually going before the state charter authorizing panel to request the main thing is to, first thing is to renew our charter, because at the end of, if they don't renew that, then we would be closed down at the end of June. I don't anticipate that at all, but I think that's going to be a given that we will be renewed. But in that renewal, we're also requesting to be able to build another campus or build a school and also add 700 students to our cap. Right now, we're at 1,300 students with 560 on the waiting list. We're wanting to add 100 students per year. So as like, this year, we have 41 seniors leave, we'd add 120 to 140 kindergartners next year. And then continue to do that and grow from basically the bottom up like we have the last six years. And that's what we're trying to do, and any support we can get from the city is, is great. And I'd be glad to answer any, try to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Scott?
You said something about building another building?
Yes.
And where would that be?
Don't know yet. We're, we've been, say, a couple of months or a few months... We're, uh, we've been, say, a couple of months or a few months, we've been, uh, trying to eye the properties. I don't know if it'll be in the city limits. I don't know if it'll be in North Little Rock city limits, don't know if it'll be in the county. I can't commit to anything at this point, but we're looking in the Mammell area, and wherever it is, it'll be convenient to Mammell citizens. So, you know, just, we need 25-plus acres. So, that's the issue with necessarily doing it possibly in the city. Maybe, maybe not, but, uh, it'd be negotiating that with the landowners in the area.
Councilmember Vaprazan?
I just wanted to congratulate you again. My daughter graduated from Academics Plus in 2002, and what's happened in the years, that too, 2012, yeah. Yeah, I was, I was good with math, didn't I? But what's happened since 2012 has just been impressive to see. Not just the growth, but the fact that you still have maintained top-shelf priorities, and the education has not dipped at all.
Thank you.
And, uh, I am very much in favor of what you all are doing.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yeah, I just want to echo Councilmember Vaprazan, Mr. McGill. Uh, I've got three littles in the elementary school, and, uh, what y'all have invested in Mammell is super, and so thank y'all for choosing to do that here. It's made, I believe it's helped revitalize this whole area right here in the center of town, uh, but, uh, it's, it's tremendous, and, and thank you for all the work that your staff and administration does and the teachers do.
Well, as you know, it's a vision of people before me. I got here in 2010 and was able to, uh, help in that vision, but there's a lot of, been a lot of people that's, uh, been a part of that, so, uh, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yeah, further echoing, and then I have a question, but, uh, yeah, I, I wish you guys had been around 20 years earlier. Uh, it would have helped, helped our family out tremendously. The public school choices we had back in the eighties and nineties were not good, and, uh, this is a bright star, and you guys have led the way. I think you were the first charter school, if I remember right.
Yes, first one, that was a, uh, there were two that same year, but the, I think they got in, uh, 2001, the first charter approved, and the next month, the Northwest Academy in North, Northwest Arkansas was then the second.
And it's certainly flourished under your leadership, so I think it's great, too. Uh, yeah, 1,300, 2,000 kids. Uh, what do you envision maybe making this campus, uh, maybe junior high or something, and taking elementary and high school somewhere else?
The best scenario would be to make, uh, right now, we're K through five at the elementary, and then we're six through 12 at the high school. Uh, best scenario would be make an eight-through-12 high school somewhere, because it's not gonna be within eyesight this time, because there's just nowhere to put it. And then, uh, making the current high school, the middle school, which would be, uh, probably a four-through-seven, and then the elementary would be K-through-three. So, it'd just be shifting those grades, shifting the numbers around.
Okay, so you'd have elementary and junior high there, and then, and put the high school campus elsewhere?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, well, hopefully, hopefully you can find a spot in Mammell.
We're, we're still looking.
We've had multiple discussions, uh, seen some mockups. He wouldn't let me keep any of the sketches. So, I brought in Mr. Grummer, and I said, memorize that. And he just rolled his eyes and walked out. But, uh, with that, I'd entertain a motion, uh, to-
Motion 2019 dash 46.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you, and you did it, Mayor.
Six, well, I'm a few minutes later than him.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next order of business is Resolution 2019 dash 41, addressing membership rates for the Mammell Center on the Lake. Madam City Clerk, treasure if you could read that by title only, please.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2019 dash 41, a resolution amending membership fees to the Mammell Center on the Lake and for other purposes.
Thank you. This was a proposal brought to me by Ms. Vogler that I believe has been addressed. Uh, well, I'll let, you have the floor, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Nicole Vogler, Director of Senior Services, and, uh, we are 1,700-plus strong in our membership this year. Very excited about that. And I've got a breakout for you, Councilmember Gardner, if you'd like it, on Silver to Gold. We talked about that in a budget meeting. Um, it has been three years since the opening of the new facility and three years since a price adjustment, and I would rather hope that you would entertain a small incremental price change than a huge jump if we wait too long, and so that's why I'm bringing it to your attention. Uh, we really appreciate all that the city does for us. We're really, really thankful that the city supports our seniors. Uh, so the item is moving it up by $10 each rate, and, um, if you have any questions, let me know.
Councilmember Scott?
Uh, didn't you work within your, um, population to come up with this? I mean, it wasn't just something that was forced on them, it was something that was discussed and-
Not this time.
Not this time, okay. And do you know what the feeling is about it?
The ones that I've spoken with, it's been a very positive feeling, not a negative feeling. Uh, they were very thankful that it wasn't a higher jump. Uh, we kept the rates, proposed rates lower than North Little Rock Hay Center. Uh, and then I've also worked with Counting on Each Other, and David Hodges, the chairman, has, uh, vouched for, uh, doing the scholarship program again, with a little tweak this next year. He would ask that the scholarshiped individuals pay $10, and that Counting on Each Other pay for the $25 portion.
That's a good idea.
Uh, we had 29 that were scholarshiped this last year, and when I say scholarshiped, it means that Counting on Each Other pays their membership bill.
And I would encourage other seniors, um, I know that when I do my membership, I try to buy an extra membership for a scholarship, and, um, it's, it's a small amount, but it's very helpful, I think, to your population as well.
Absolutely, thank you. It's a great idea.
Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yeah, so each one of those four went up by $10, so it was like 25 for the resident rate on the Silver Pass and that sort of thing.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, uh, are there other, other rates and fees involved? Like if, if they come in, uh, for their afternoon card game, do they have to pay a fee for that, or, I mean, it's-
There are some afternoon, there are some different rates. Uh, for just-for-fun groups, which are card groups, there are no rates. Those are at no cost to our members. Uh, Watercolor, for instance, is a group that meets once a week with us, and they heavily use color copies. Uh, they're at $10, which is $5 each month. Um, exercise classes are five, that we stream the material are $5 per session, which is $2.50 per month. Uh, but keep in mind that we've got to use the electricity, the internet, uh, you know, just the overhead of what they're doing. And so, uh, yes, there are small incremental fees. Uh, it's, it's just one way for us to, uh, be able to give back to the city for our revenues, make our revenues.
Okay. Uh, all right, sounds good.
I just wanted to, um, commend, uh, you, Ms. Vogler, for being very conscious of, uh, revenue versus expenses. Uh, I appreciate that. But with that, I'd entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2019 dash 44.
Second, thank you.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or debate on that? Uh, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you for coming, Ms. Vogler. All right, next up is Resolution 2019 dash 44, authorizing an agreement for the use and funding of a detention center. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2019 dash 44, a resolution to authorize an agreement with Plaski County, Arkansas, for the proportional use of funding the Plaski County Regional Detention Center for a period of time and for other purposes.
Thank you. This is the, um, amount that we were aware of. It includes a 25% cost increase. I'll just draw y'all's attention to page two of the contract where they are, uh, where the city agrees to pay one-sixth the cost of an audit to be performed. Uh, that audit is to determine what the cost should be. Of course, um, uh, and Madam City Attorney knows better than all of us that the, the county was saying the cost was a very high number, and some of the cities were saying it was a very low number. Um, and so that independent auditor is supposed to be able to come in and assess what the costs and the fees actually, uh, should be. We don't have a cost of that audit. I pushed, um, uh, at the last local meeting of sorts, um, pretty heavily to find out a ballpark cost of what that audit would be. Um, after much prying, I got, uh, that it would probably be no more than 30,000, but even if you were to double that, it'd be 60,000, is the, the answer I've got. They haven't retained anyone. At one-sixth, a 60,000 audit would be 10,000 to the city. Whatever that audit amount comes to, we would have to come back to the city council and ask for those monies, but we are agreeing to pay that with this. If we do not agree to this, then they get to set the fees. Um, I believe that's correct under law, and I assure you that will be less favorable to the city. Um, did I leave anything out? Madam City Attorney?
I don't think, I don't think you really left anything out. I think the purpose of the audit is that there are certain revenues that the jail receives as well that really weren't taken into account last time when we were looking at per diem rates. Um, and all of the cities, I think, kind of jointly requested that those, there be this type of, uh, objective analysis of both revenues and expenses. So, um, I think in the end, it'll probably be worth it to have the audit done and contribute to that.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
The audit is very essential, and, but, but my question is, let's say the auditor comes in, and we've already paid $68,520. That's a flat fee, that's not per diem. So, the auditor comes in and, and if this amount is more than what the auditor says, will they give us our money back, or we, I mean, we go into the next year, or have a-
So, it's my understanding that this amount is for this year regardless of what the auditor comes back with. The audit is, uh, for the purpose of establishing what our per diem share would be, um, in the following year and going forward. So, I think we're just committing to this amount for this year.
And this $68,520 is 25% more than what we've been paying in the past?
That's correct.
Okay, well.
And that amount is included in the budget that we will, I'm sure, be discussing here shortly.
Motion to approve Resolution 2019 dash 44.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve that resolution. Is there any discussion or debate? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. And now, we will move on to Resolution 2019 dash 45, approving an operating budget for 2020. Madam City Clerk, treasure if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution 2019 dash 45, a resolution of the Mammell City Council adopting a budget for the operation of the city for the calendar year 2020.
Each of y'all should have received a copy of the budget. They were delivered to y'all's residences in final, in final draft form, preapproval, on Friday afternoon. Uh, Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yes, we had, uh, done kind of unusual thing there at the last budget meeting, and, and, uh, at the very last second, added about $75,000 into the budget for a splash pad. Uh, Councilman Saunders wasn't at that meeting and didn't have a chance to weigh in or kind of vote for that, and, uh, I was hoping he'd be here tonight so that we could maybe kind of revisit that a little bit, and he's not here. So, I guess I'd make a motion that we delay this resolution until our next, uh, council meeting in, first meeting of January.
So, we have a, uh, a motion to postpone, table Resolution 2019 dash 45 to the first meeting in January.
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second on that motion?
Yes, second.
We've got a motion and a second on that. Um, the floor is open to debate on that motion to table. Uh, with that, also, my first question would be to the, uh, city attorney. Do you happen to know off the top of your head what our ordinances say about, um, not passing a budget until the start of the year, and then would you recommend a continuing resolution to extend this year's budget in through the first council meeting of Monday or of January?
I don't know off the top of my head. Find it up and look right now.
Great. Um, I've got a few different lights on. Uh, I'm going to assume they're on this, um, topic. If they are not, please pass. Councilmember Scott?
Yes, um, we did have a fairly long discussion about, um, the splash pad meeting missed. So, Councilmember Scott, or Saunders was there, you know, while we were doing the discussion, and I can't speak for him because he's not here, but he was aware of, um, what was going on.
Um, Councilmember Vaprazan?
I would just say, we're not assured that the next council member or meeting that we have, that he's still not feeling well and shows up. If he doesn't show up, then are we gonna keep pushing it back, keep pushing it back? So, I, I think it's wise for us to do, I mean, re, just from the numbers that we took in the blue room there, even if he was adamantly against it, it would still pass. Just from the informal vote that we took at the meeting, so, just wanted to bring that up. Again, we, we don't know that he's gonna be here at the first meeting in January, if he's still not feeling well, so.
I don't know the details of Mr. Saunders. I don't know if he's got some long-term illness or what, but, uh, anyway, my thought is, is, you know, he, he would probably have something to say on that, but, uh, he, go ahead.
Councilmember Holt?
I agree with, um, Councilmember Vaprazan. It's a very difficult decision. Um, I, I certainly support, I, I'm, I'm positive at the original discussion. I have copies of the ordinances that go back to August, uh, 17th, 2017, when we began this conversation. And he made the remark that he didn't mind having the committee, and I have the comments in the ordinance, I have it documented, and I'd like to share it with you after a while if we, if we go ahead and proceed. But he was absolutely adamant that, that he did not want any money to come out of our budget for that project. Um, there is a, a statement here that I will borrow, I didn't mean to use it right now, but that, uh, Councilmember Anderson, who originated this, said that the purpose of the committee would be to explore funding options such as grants and private donations. And it was, I, I called the mayor today, Mayor Watson, and to get his input and get, make sure that my mind wasn't twisted all around about it, um, because I, I'm also very much opposed to private, our, our city council, um, extending the funds. But let me stop that and say that I guess we are correct not actually to delay, because the point has been made by Councilmember Vaprazan, if what if, and, and there's no answer to that, so unless we have a special meeting for that purpose, if he feels good enough, but whatever the council decides, I, I understand, I'll go along with it.
Madam City Attorney? I'm sorry, Mr. Holt.
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, so, I apologize for that. Um, Madam City Attorney?
I was just gonna read to you the ordinance, or the code section that, um, you requested information on. Section 2 dash 364 states that on or before December 30th of each year, the city council shall adopt a budget for the ensuing year.
Right.
Okay, so it sounds like, uh, sounds like the law says we've got, got to vote on this tonight or else have another meeting. Is that correct?
Well, and that, that it's, there's a citation there to an Arkansas code section, so I don't think that's, uh, it's not just a city ordinance. don't think that's, it's not just a city ordinance. I believe that's also required by Arkansas Code.
Okay. In that case, let me, let me proceed on here. I've got a few more comments.
Well, so if, so.
I'll leave that subject.
The council, well, so the, the motion on the floor is still.
Let's go ahead and vote on that, I guess.
Well, yes. So let's limit the comment, the discussion to whether we're going to postpone the approval of the budget until the first meeting in January.
Sure, thank you.
If you don't mind, Mr. Mosley. Councilmember Holt?
I apologize, Mr. Mayor. I prematurely hit my light. I've made my point on that, so I wait for the vote.
And so before we vote, just to clarify, it seems that the city attorney's opinion is that we not wait until the first meeting in January. With that said, all those in favor, or the motion on the floor is to postpone it until the first meeting in January. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
Excuse me, excuse me. I'm sorry. Can you start over?
Yeah, so why don't we do this, can we?
Why don't we do a roll call?
Can we get a roll call vote with the, the issue being voted on is whether to postpone the, or to table Resolution 2019 dash forty-five, the budget until the first meeting in January?
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
No.
Councilmember Gardner?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Tierney?
No.
Councilmember Vapurzane?
No.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Motion fails. So with that, the floor is open for discussion on Resolution 2019 dash forty-five. Councilmember Mosley, have you anything?
All right. Yes, I do. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor very much for a very good budget process this year. You met with the department heads and got their input, and you called down much of their input, which I don't think has been done that well in the past. So I compliment you on that very much. You basically presented us with a budget that you could live with, and we've either improved or messed it up as we've, as we've done. But you, you've been very, very good about that, and I think, I think all, all your department heads respected that process and everything. So I think that was good. That was an improvement over prior years. The only problem I had was just the very last night when we were all wrapping up and we'd gone through the whole thing, and it was brought up about a splash pad, and perhaps we should do something about a splash pad. This is a project that was not vetted in any way through the budget process. It was not presented by our Parks and Rec Director as something that he had looked at and could tell us what operating expenses were going to be. And it's, it's basically a big prod, project, and it's something that required, should have required more time and attention than to what it was. As it was, this was kind of like going through Walmart and seeing the gossip magazine at the counter and saying, oh, I think I'll buy one of those. So I, I would rather, you know, this, this was very much a surprise to me. Apparently, there'd been some talk about it at a meeting I missed, but this, there was no discussion about putting it in the budget, I don't think, at that point. But the whole thing is, is it, it's, it's out of sync with our process. If I were a department head, I'd be, I'd be upset that, that we stuck something like that into the budget at the last second. I mean, you've got senior, senior services over there. They're out there pulling weeds, trying to save money. And, you know, what we do, we peel off a few thousands at, in a council, at a budget meeting and say, here, let's, let's do this, you know. It was just, it was a kind of a, almost a random act. We need to be more organized and more respectful of the process. And it, this should be something that is presented next year. You know, if somebody wants to present it mid-year, go ahead and do that. I'm, you know, I'm not real fond of mid-year projects, but if it looks like for some reason we've got the money, I'm, I'm, I'm for it. And, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to having a splash pad. I don't really understand what the goal is, and I don't understand if there's a committee that's been looking at this, a formal committee, informal committee or what, but it just came out of the blue. And so I'm going to make a motion that we, we remove the seventy-five thousand that we put in there and that it be brought up again next year.
Trying to get to the right page to properly.
I think it's page fifty-seven.
Yes, sir. So we've got a motion to remove seventy-five thousand dollars from the parks' capital improvement for splash pad contribution. Do we have a second on that motion?
Yes, second.
We've got a motion and a second on removing the splash pad contribution of seventy-five thousand from that. If we could limit our conversation for the time being on that particular topic. I believe the next person was Councilmember Scott. Did you have something to say about that?
Yeah, thank you. Actually, I was going to call out and I, and recognize Councilmember Holt for the amount of work that he put into the concept of a splash pad some years ago. He did a lot of research. He presented a lot of papers, showed how economic development could be improved through the city having a splash pad. And I know that it had a lot of support at that time, but there just wasn't a group that sort of carried that through, and it sort of died on the vine. Then a group did develop, a grassroots group made up of citizens and some members of the council that carried the idea forward. And it was carried forward in conjunction with the all-inclusive playground. The hope was by that committee, I was not a member of that committee, by the way, so I'm not speaking as an insider. I'm just someone from the outside looking in. The concept behind that was that they were going to try to raise private funds insofar as possible and grants to do those elements, realizing all along that it would be a phased project, you know, that you could do part of it, and then that would provide the impetus potentially for more people to contribute and, and do, do the rest of the project. And the splash pad was the shorter pole in the tent. So we thought that, you know, when we had the discussion at the budget meeting for some time with the presentation and all of that kind of thing, that the splash pad would, would be the one that could be accomplished first. What made up my mind about that was that we had been offered a fifty, the committee, not me, but the, the committee had been offered a fifty thousand dollar grant to build this wonderful, you know, facility here in the city. And that if we couldn't come up with the rest of the funding in time, that that grant would go away in March, March. So that, to me, what that meant was, it was like taking fifty thousand dollars out of my pocket and getting a match and lighting it on fire and just watching it go up in smoke, because the opportunity to get that money may not present itself ever again. So in order to save that fifty thousand dollars and get the splash pad underway and lay the groundwork for all of the work that Councilmember Holt did and that the committee did, it seemed the right thing to do to give it a little boost by the city. Seventy-five thousand dollars. That means that the committee still has about twenty thousand dollars that they need to raise prior to having the full amount of funding, which the committee felt confident that they could do. And that's why I actually presented it as an addition to the budget at that time. But it wasn't because it was my project. It was because of the way it was presented, and I couldn't see that fifty thousand dollars going down the drain. And I think that this would be a huge economic development tool for our city.
Thank you, Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just, I'm just going to walk through the documentation. The first one is Agenda Regular Meeting, City Council, July the seventeenth. Item B under New Business, Request to Form a Mammell All-Inclusive Playground Committee Sponsored by Councilmember Anderson. Mayor Watson, under All-Inclusive Playground Committee as a subject, Mayor Watson stated, "Councilmember Anderson has requested the formulation of all-inclusive playground." There's a lot to read here, so I highlighted some things, so I'll skip part of this. I repeat myself that Councilmember Anderson stated, "The purpose of the committee would be to explore funding options such as grants and private donations." Councilmember Anderson stated, "The committee should include two members of the, Councilmembers and three city members." Councilmember Anderson stated, "Each member would be bringing unique perspective to the committee since each individual has had experience dealing with children with special needs, learning, and sensory disability." Councilmember Anderson stated, "Philip Rayburn, Director of Parks and Recreation, would be invited to all meetings in addition to the public." Councilmember Anderson stated, "The committee would be a temporary, and any action taken would have, have to come, would have to come before the council before moving the process forward." Philip Rayburn, Director of Parks and Recreation, stated, "He would attend the meetings in an advisory capacity." Councilmember Vapurzane made a motion to form all, all-exclusive committee that includes three citizens, Michelle McClanahan, Ashley Washam, Melissa Dawson, and two council members, Rick Anderson and Terry Williams. An advise, an advisory member of the staff would be Parks and Recreation Director. August the, August the seventh, Councilmember Anderson said, "All-inclusive Playground Committee meeting is up and running, and the next meeting would be on, for the committee would be on the fourteenth, that's of August, at the community center." I have a list of those council members, of those committee members. I'm asking, are those committee members all still on board? Has there been any change in the membership?
I'm no longer on the committee.
And Councilmember Anderson, I'm not sure that the all-inclusive playground committee still exists. We now have a play and splash committee, but I don't think there's anyone from that original committee that serves on the other. And I, I was kind of talking to the city attorney about this at the very last minute, trying to figure out functionally whether that task force still existed or it kind of faded away. But there's none of the folks.
Are some, some of the ones that he mentioned are still a part of the committee?
I think it morphed into something completely different than what it started out to be. So I think the focus now is mainly on the, there's still a focus on the all-inclusive playground committee, but more of it's being focused on the.
So the regional committee, I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, no, I'm fine.
I'm good.
The original committee is not, not a committee as such, that, that original group, is that correct? But they have never actually offended, I mean offended, resigned their commission as a committee, is that correct? I mean, we just, it just didn't happen, right? I mean.
I didn't officially.
Ms. Williams, you're wrong.
I didn't official, I don't, I remember telling Councilmember Anderson at the time that I just did not have the time to serve.
Right, right.
In the capacity that they needed. And so they, they had other people come and volunteer. And as what it is now, I just cannot speak to.
I guess my, my point is, without, you know, making an issue out of it, but we approved a specific committee, and that was in place at a point in time. It's been two and a half years at this point. So it's okay if that's not the original committee. It's just that the council has never been informed. And as the statement is said here, that the, you know, council would have, it'd be brought before the council. So somebody technically should have resigned. Basically, am I wrong on that? And said, we're not in force anymore? So now we have a new group. Do we, I'm not trying to be arbitrary, folks. I'm just, as a business person, I'm just trying to ask, who is on the new committee? Who's responsible for these funds? When in talking with Mayor Watson today, you know, I'm, he's very patient with me, you know how, how I get when I get upset. But anyway, the, he said that if we do this, we are setting a precedent. And that if this is a loan, then we, in the same sense of the corporation that wants their fifty thousand dollars back, if this is a loan, if the committee raises the money, do we get our seventy-five thousand dollars back at some point in time? Do we say, okay, it's been two and a half years now? Do we make the loan and say, we'll say, okay, we'll put out seventy-five thousand dollars for two and a half years at that point? If the money has not been used, then we want the money to be, in other words, we just can't send it out there and just sit there forever. I mean, as a city, we owe it to our constituents to be accountable for the funds that we, that we put out. And again, this is not, it was included in the, in one of the first pages that it is, the way it's listed, but it's, it's not part of our normal city funds. This is part of a, the mayor said that it was okay to, for the committee to do this, but the city is only donating the property. We are not contributing to the funds itself. If the funds, it would, it would be built on our city property. So we are not accountable for it. So this just sort of comes along without any delineation of specific terms to protect the city from, you know, to be able to explain to our constituents, how are we handling this item, no matter if we are our own council members. I mean, we're trustworthy and everything, but you need documentation for it. So that's my only point. I, I'm, you know, I'm done.
Yeah. Councilmember Holt, if I could be clear, I have absolutely no intention of writing a seventy-five thousand dollar check to a committee that may or may not be the original committee. That is money that, that would go through Parks and Rec. And I, and we do have a contract with some of that money. It's been a while since I looked at it, but, and we haven't discussed, I think Mr. Rayburn has asked to meet with me about this topic. But that money would presumably, I mean, we wouldn't, the, the construction of that project would not fall to the Splay and Plash, Play and Splash Committee. It would be a city project at that time. It might be helpful, Mr. Rayburn, if you have anything to add. I'd ask if you could come up. I know you've been involved throughout this entire process. And, and maybe it's probably a little bit frustrating sitting out there, since you've been to so many meetings with us trying to piece it together. Maybe you could.
Right.
Let us know what's going on.
Well, it's like Alderman Holt said, the committee's been together for two and a half years, and then we have had some, the core groups there. Rick still comes. Alderman Gardner's pretty much stepped in to his role with that. And right now, all the money is with a nonprofit organization, the Timmons Arts Foundation. They're a 501(c)(3). All the donation and money we've gotten goes into account that their name's on, and I'm associated with that. As far as, we haven't written any checks. We've only been getting donations. But if the checks were to be written, it would be a deed of signature from myself and represented from the Timmons Arts Foundation.
And of course, when we set that up, the anticipation, what, that wasn't set up to handle city funds going into it.
Correct.
That was set up for a way for the, the private donations to come in and rest in a nonprofit. So any money that the city spent would not, I, I would not be going to Timmons Art Foundation as the conduit for the, as a nonprofit. It would be the city contracting, either doing it ourselves, or is this one of the items that we'd be contracting through?
Most of it would be contracted out. We would do, the Parks Department would do in-house some work, but the land is pretty much flat. I mean, there's not going to be a whole lot of dirt work, but that would be something that we would do in-house to, you know, knock the price down on, on that, on that fee.
So.
And, and with the Timmons Art Foundation, with any grants we applied for, if you didn't have the 501(c)(3), you couldn't even apply for it. So that was the main reason, to get a nonprofit 501(c)(3). Also, to keep me from holding the money, or the city holding the money, it goes into a account just for the all-inclusive playground.
And so the way this would probably pan out, and it's, it's very early stages. We haven't even had the money appropriated, but it would likely be a, building it would be a partnership between us and the nonprofit to fund it. Contractually, as soon as it's built, it gets dedicated to the city and the city.
We would take it over. Yeah, we would take it all over at that point in time, be responsible for maintaining it and keep, like we do all our facilities.
Were there any?
Just, just some history. I think most of you were on the board at the time. The splash pad's been asked for twice through the city council. Once I did it, I can't remember how many years it was, but about two years after that, Alderman Holt had seen some from other cities at the National League of Cities, I believe, and he contacted me, and I gave him some information, and he had a lot of information. and he contacted me and I gave him some information and he had a lot of information and actually asked me to put it on the capital at that time. Didn't get approved and then that's when the committee came about, just to try to get this for the city.
Do you know how much, how many funds the committee currently has available?
I believe it's right over $100,000.
105.
Yeah.
Cash and pledges.
And that's counting the $50,000 that we could lose if we don't, are unable to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Rayburn. You may get more questions thrown your way here in a minute. Councilmember Vapurzian.
I think anything after 30 months is going to change the way it looks. Like you were on the signed committee, did anybody resign from that or did things change or is it still in existence or?
We're in purgatory right now.
Okay, okay, so, I mean, it's, things like that, you know, there's a revolving door at times on that. And it was kind of a random act. We had talked about it the week before, two weeks before, but oftentimes kindness is a random act. And $75,000 is less than four tenths of a percent of our entire budget, less than .04. And after 30 months and from what Mr. Rayburn said, four years plus saying that, you know, this is a good thing for our city, I think that, I feel good about stepping up and saying, well, let's, let's get the ball rolling because if we, if you lose that $50,000, you might as well just give the donations back.
Right.
Because it's, it's dead in the mud. And I think we're at a point right now, it's a tipping point. I mean, tonight is a tipping point, it's either going to happen or it's never going to happen unless there's a wealthy beneficiary that steps in and says, we'll write the check for everything. So, and if we're going to see anything on that piece of property, I, I'd like to see this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner?
I think I have my lot on to kind of explain to, in reference to Councilmember Holt, about how the committee has continued along. While there have been some changes throughout the last couple of years and some new faces have come on and some older faces have dropped off, one of the things that we did, I stood up here in 2018, I believe, as a resident, not as a council member, but asking for a resolution at that point that the council would support the project. And that was another one of those things in which it passed seven to one because there was an absence, but it passed. Basically, we used that resolution to go forward and request those grants because that gave us some ammunition in our grant request to be able to ask for, for grant donations. So, so we have continued to meet on a monthly basis and solicit funds and those have been donated in. And so like has been mentioned, we have right at $105,000 in pledges as well as in cash in the bank. And I, for one, am very proud that the city will be able to give our residents about a $200,000 splash pad for $75,000. So I'm, for one, am excited about it. So I will obviously be voting no to remove the splash pad from the budget, but that, some of the questions I wanted to answer is that it has continued, it has morphed a little bit because one of the things you mentioned was that we were going to look for ways to raise funds and that was a piece of this. We were looking for $800,000 to do the entire project and that's, that's a lot to bite off in one bite. And so we started looking at how we could phase it and, and do it in smaller chunks. And we have the money to be able to do the splash pad and if this is passed tonight, then hopefully by next summer, if we can get on the schedule, Momo's going to be using a new splash pad. So I, I think it's a great thing to do, to give back to the community and get this built. And as Councilmember Vapurzian said, this is going to be a tipping point for us to be able to get the rest of the project going, so. But I'd be happy to answer any other questions as well as Director Rayburn because it's, it is something that has been on my radar now for a couple of years. It has been talked about a lot in the community, it's been promoted a lot in the community. So people are very aware of what's going on.
Thank you, Councilmember Gardner. Councilmember Mosley.
Yeah, who's, who's on this committee? Is it a formal committee or what is it?
A committee was formed according to.
How did, how did you end up as chairman?
Well, I'm not. We, Director Rayburn, you may have more insight to that. We, we have met.
And, and who's we?
Citizens. I could give you some names, I want to leave some off if I try to do that, but I'll be happy to run through it.
Because I, I talked to our city clerk and I asked her last time, there was a notice given out for, for a meeting of the splash pad, whatever committee, it wasn't, there hadn't been one since last August. So I don't know how you can be meeting and be a real committee and all that without noticing it.
Okay.
You know, once their, once they're formed, you're supposed to do that.
One council member.
You know, who, do you have, you have certain council members that are, that are in the group?
Just myself.
Just you? Okay. So this is really, what do you call it, an ad hoc committee?
It's a group of citizens and if you, I guess I would be the only elected official that attends. It's a group of citizens that has been raising money to go into this 501(c)(3) to then contribute back to the city.
Okay, but it's, okay, so it's been very informal. Could I ask Mr. Rayburn, why, why he didn't, why did you not bring this project forward to the budget process?
We started the budget process, what, August, July?
July.
So at that point in time, we actually had a grant through the Blue and You Foundation that we thought we had a really good chance of getting and they didn't make that decision until November, first part of November.
Middle, yeah.
And we found out the day after, they said, we didn't get it, that Little Rock got it. So during the budget process, that was the main reason. I've, I've already brought it to the council twice, but I didn't put it in this year because we actually thought we had a really good chance of getting that grant where we wouldn't have to come and ask for any money. We would have been able to do the first part of the splash pad because that grant would have put us over the $200,000.
My, my deal is, I'm not opposed to a splash pad at some point, you know, put it in the budget, we'll, we'll hash it over and do, I mean, we haven't seen any plans, not formally, supposedly they're, they're posted some, there's some plans posted somewhere.
There's, there's some rendering drawings.
I don't know if it's by official committee or this group or what, so.
Through the committee.
Anyway, it's just, it's just been a ragtag deal. Do you claim to be on the committee? Are you still on the committee?
No, I just said, I'm not on the committee, but I do have a question. Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Mosley. So this ultimately will just be another city park and you ride around and you see city parks everywhere that I'm sure the city has paid for these city parks everywhere. We look at Lake, Lake Willistine, the park there, there's, I mean, we are a city of parks and this will be another city park ultimately, right?
Yes.
And we've always paid for our city parks.
Correct.
Okay, so $75,000 toward another city park, which is, as Councilmember Vapurzian said, is such a small amount of our budget. I don't see, I don't really see what the difference is now as opposed to building the playground at Lake Willistine, other than maybe that one does not.
It's just that the council member Anderson, you know, brought it up to try to do it without city funds at that point in time, pretty much knowing that if we got close, that at that point in time, we could, could ask hopefully for, to finish it off and that's kind of what's happened here. But as I explained, it was November, I don't remember the exact date, but we didn't, you know, that was the last thing we wanted to do because that's what Alderman Anderson at the time was selling, was, you know, grants and funding. It's just harder to get money than what they anticipated. And, and when it came to the point where we didn't get the Blue and You grant, well then that's, we couldn't start it in the spring. So the Ottenheimer Group was saying, you know, if you can't do it, then we want our money back because they want to see something, they don't want, they don't want their donation just to sit, sit there, they want to see construction and something built.
Well, and I think having a $200,000 splash pad built for $75,000 is a quite, quite a good deal.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'll be voting yes for this.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosley, were you finished?
No, I'm, I'm still, still rolling.
Pardon me, I'm sorry. I'm at the age now where if I don't say it right now, I'm going to forget it.
It's all right, it was relevant.
And you might wish I had, but.
But the, the whole deal is, is, you know, if you're, if you're dealing in this kind of money, there needs to be a formal committee or some kind of process here, you need to be heading it up or something like that because this, I'm really kind of surprised that people are donating money to something that's become just an informal group of.
I think I've missed one meeting and we, and they meet about once a month. I think they've missed one or two because of trying to get plans.
Again, this doesn't seem to be a formal meeting because it hadn't been noticed by the.
Right, I understand.
City clerk. And as I understand, if you've got a, if you've got a committee going, you're not supposed to have a meeting without it being noticed, even, you know, even, even folks aren't supposed to be calling each other. You shouldn't be calling him, telling him numbers or whatever unless you.
This is a group of volunteer, I mean, citizens, I mean, it's not.
Well, then it should be headed up by you.
I believe the city attorney.
Well, no.
Light a moment ago on.
But I know, I know when it was joined, I was supposed to be an advisor.
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify a little bit, that the public notice and FOIA requirements for public notice meetings are when you'll have multiple members of a governing body at the meeting. So if you'll have two or more members of the city council, then that meeting should be publicly noticed. If you're going to have two or more members of the planning commission, which is also considered a governing body, then you would need to have a public notice for that meeting. If you're going to have a meeting of a committee that the city's just appointed for that particular type of task, but that is not going to have authority to allocate city funds or to bind the city as a law-making or enforcing entity, then that would not have to be a publicly noticed meeting as far as I understand.
Okay, that's a little different than I understood. We, we had a tree board committee at one time and we were strongly advised to not talk to each other unless we were having a meeting. And I think I was the only, I may have been the only council member on it, but anyway. Anyway, I guess we'll go to a vote here, but I, I think that this is, this was just not a, not a good, good time, you're not ready, things are still in flux on this thing. I don't, I think it's, I think it's half-baked and it shouldn't have been put in the budget. So I'm, I stand by my motion to go ahead and remove this from the, the budget.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosley. Councilmember Williams, your light is on. Do you have anything?
No, that was it.
Councilmember Holt?
So the motion that we're on is whether or not, the question is to remove or not remove, is that where we still are?
Yes, we are still discussing the motion to remove the $75,000 from the Parks Capital Improvement Funds for a splash pad contribution.
Then my comment is not about that in itself. I'll wait and make my comment when we come back to the discussion of whether or not to have it or not to have it. Is that right?
To, to have the splash pad or not?
Well, we're, the motion is to, to remove it and, and to delay it, right? We're still on that motion?
No, I'm, I'm, we're, we're removing it now. They, they, they voted down the delay.
So we're, we're basically essentially discussing the merits of these $75,000 for the.
Yeah, I've made, I've made a motion to, to remove that $75,000 from the budget to take the splash pad out.
So if we have anything to say about, we go ahead and say that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I'll be brief then. Let me share one more thing that I didn't share, that Councilmember Saunders wanted a clarification on what an all-inclusive playground would provide. Councilmember Anderson stated the playground would be designed to allow wheelchair accessibility in addition to amenities special needs children can enjoy. Councilmember Anderson stated many aspects involving the playground would be explored for the committee. So I, I think it's important. Please note, this is a heartbreaking situation. I, I can't talk without crying, but it, it's not about the money. You know, when, the night that you were interviewed as council member, I said, you sound like a salesman. And you said, I think that's a compliment. It's a compliment, you're a good salesman and I support you completely. Did anyone else get the, the letter that I got Saturday from Play Power? I got the letter from these people and both sides. I meant to bring it, I had it out to bring it so to show everybody in color of all the splash pads that they do and the cities around us that are doing it. I'm not trying to hide anything. My point is, I don't agree with putting it into part of our budget. If we, if the council wants to vote that we take charge of it and we make the decision that we are going to build a splash pad, I presented it once, two and a half years ago, sir, something like that, and I'll do it again. I'm not objecting to the city doing it, it's just that if we're going to donate to a fund, that we don't really seem to have an organized official committee or something in place that we have to be accountable for. And if we want to make a loan, that we're going to get it back in two and a half years if it isn't used or something, just some kind of an agreement that we come to. Otherwise, let, let's redo this whole thing and say, okay, the city, let's build a splash pad. And it may take us till the end of next year or whenever, but put it on our budget and do it.
Councilmember Holt, this may address exactly what you're talking about. There's no proposal right now to give $75,000 to a group or committee. There's not a proposal to give $75,000 to a loan to an entity. There's a proposal for the city to spend $75,000 on a splash pad that we would be either directly contracting with that installer is what it sounds like. So this money would expire at the end of the year if the city did not obligate those funds either by spending them or through a valid purchase order as the finance director brought up.
I just didn't take it that way. I didn't understand that, Mr. Mayor.
It did, we, because it wasn't really addressed that way. You're perfect, your inference was perfectly logical from the information that you were giving. I'm just saying that I have absolutely no intention of writing a, nor do I know that we could write a check of $75,000 to a nonprofit to just sit there as something else. They'll have to match the funds and then we'll use our money to contract, probably in cooperation, which would be, I'm guessing, several people in that contract. One would be the nonprofit, one would be the city and we're purchasing something and we'll work out the details later.
How does that affect the $50,000 that Councilmember Gardner?
So the, the grant that they have received, the, the foundation that has made that grant said they're, they don't want it sitting out there. They made it a year and a half ago or whenever that was. They said, if you're not going to go forward with this project, we're going to withdraw our grant and spend it on a project that is going to go forward.
So if we do this, he'd still be able to get the $50,000, am I understanding that correctly?
That's the only way.
Yeah, that's the only way, yeah.
Yeah, and.
That $50,000 would go toward our $75,000 to?
Well, that 50,000, that $105,000, which includes the $50,000, plus the additional funds that they think they can raise, an additional $25,000 that they've, think they can raise roughly to get it going. But they, if your only concern is that we're writing or you're giving a loan to some other entity.
Right.
To build the project that they want, that is not occurring.
That's my.
It would be Parks and, that's right, it's in the Parks and Rec CIP. It'd be that gentleman reviewing it just the same they would if, if the city council gave them $100,000 for curb and gutter in Lake Willistine or some other, it would be overseen through the Parks Department, of course, in cooperation with my office and the city attorney for any contracts that we didn't turn to. Councilmember Gardner?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that this is not a half-baked project, this is a very well-baked project. It's been completely designed and ready to go and it's just a matter of funding. So the, the timing, from a budgetary standpoint, like Director Rayburn alluded to, was awkward at best, simply because the, the evening that I brought that to you all was five days after we had been turned down for 120, 40, no, 140,000 was our ask from this other foundation. So that's the reason he did not include it in his capital improvement for this year was because we wanted to, I would much rather use grant money than city money, but $75,000 to build a $200,000 splash pad, I'm all for. thousand to build a two-hundred-thousand-dollar splash pad, I'm all for.
Councilmember Tierney?
Initially, the request was actually a hundred thousand, and then when it was reduced to seventy-five thousand, that's when it made a lot of sense to me, because I'd really hate to lose a fifty thousand dollar grant.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Mosley?
Hmm, yeah, again, yeah, there's not gonna be, yes, there's not gonna be any, any check written to anybody outside the city on this deal, but just, again, it was, this, this project hadn't been vetted by the council, it hadn't, hadn't gone through the budget process, and so I'm making a motion to remove it, and, and I hope you'll vote no, I mean, I hope you vote yes, but anyway, I'm through talking.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second to remove the seventy-five thousand dollars from the Park's CIP schedule. Are there any other questions, comments, and concerns about that motion? Seeing none, members, so an affirmative vote is a vote to remove the splash pad. Those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no?
No.
Motion fails. Was there any confusion? Is there anyone that is confused about the motion?
Very confusing.
I assume the final vote was five to two, with one not being here?
Yes, sir. All right. So, now on the floor, we have our 2020 budget.
Motion to approve Resolution 2019-45.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Councilmember Scott?
I just wanted to, again, recognize Councilmember Holt for his passion in getting our underpaid city employees up to the minimum tier. I appreciate that, he put his money where his mouth was, because he refused to take the increase that was granted to the council members last year, and that's one of the reasons our budget's a little high this year, because we are bringing a number of our employees from below minimum to at least the first quartile of where they should be paid, and my thanks to you, Councilmember Holt, for bringing that forward and being so passionate about it. And that's all I had to say about that.
I thank the council member for your kind words.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Scott. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2019-45. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, say no?
No.
Was that a five, two, one absent? Okay. Motion carries, budget is approved. The next order of business is Resolution 2019-47, transferring money from the general fund to the capital improvement fund. Madam City Clerk, Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2019-47, a resolution transferring money from the general fund to the capital improvement fund.
Motion to approve 2019-47.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. For those in the audience, what we're doing is, it's proposed that we transfer money from the general fund in anticipation for future fire apparatuses, fire trucks, towers, et cetera. Councilmember Gardner?
Just one quick question on this. Do you anticipate bringing another budget resolution in January for the extra balloon payment that we had talked about?
This is the extra balloon payment.
I thought there was an additional amount for...
We have built into the budget the one-eighty plus the three-ten.
Okay.
That was the number that when Ms. Vega got with the fire department and, and sort of retro-calculated the amount, so that the balloon payment would be at the front of the bag.
I thought I was expecting like four hundred and something, so that's why I was thinking there was gonna be an additional, but, okay. So, that will fully fund what we have...
And one of the reasons is, we have, I wasn't gonna say this, because it's an extra layer of complexity, but this year, we're putting sixty, sixty, and sixty, one-eighty into the budget for the truck. We actually wouldn't need one of those sixties, because we're putting three-hundred and ten in, and then the same thing for next year, so that number is reduced down a little bit.
Thank you, sir.
Did, we have a motion and a second? We did? Okay. Is there any further discussion on that issue? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, say no? Motion carries, that concludes new business. We'll move on to Mayor's comments. First, I want to say thank you to the city council for a debate on a budget issue that was tactful and respectful, and where we, we went through the process without name-calling, or shouting, or screaming. At this point, I now think that the splash pad is probably one of the most vetted projects that we have for this year, but thank you for that. Included in the council packet is information regarding Fire Station Two's alleged mold issue. The firefighters are back in the building. I have included a report from a highly recommended individual who basically said, maybe we don't have to worry about everything to the extent we've, they changed the air filters, and the mold issue's decreased by ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent, and recommending no further remediation. I think there's still a few moisture issues that we'll keep an eye on, but there's no health or safety risk that's in there. Also, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We've completed one year with me as mayor. Council Tierney, I think, is the only new council person this year. Yeah, Gardner, he counts, Councilmember Gardner. Congratulations to both of y'all, we've survived the first year, and thank you. And that concludes Mayor's comments. Councilmember comments? Councilmember Vapresan?
Wanted to thank Ms. Vega and her staff for the incredible amount of work on a new program that we didn't have until right at budget process, and thank you very much. Wanted to thank Ms. Rachel and her staff for the awesome Christmas video. That was very, very good, very uniquely done, and he's not here tonight, but just pointing out about Chief Eze Allen, his donation of his kidney, that's big time.
He is, that's big time.
That's big time. That just shows what kind of leadership we have. I'm very, very impressed with somebody who'll do that, for somebody who's outside of the family. That's, that's big time and impressive, and prayers are still with the chief.
Someone who he's never met?
Someone who he never met until after.
I told him it's a very tough way to lose a half-pound, that there are easier ways.
Yeah.
You're absolutely right. Speaking of the holiday video, the nineteenth is the culmination of the very merry Mammell, so all the homes, all the lighting should be posted on Facebook. If you'd like to vote and participate in the People's Choice Award, please hop on Facebook and do that. Is that where we're doing the voting, Rachel?
Right.
Thank you. Councilmember Scott?
I was really kind of surprised that our Shop With The Cop endeavor wasn't, you know, kind of more publicized. It's, it's like the policemen sort of just did this, and did it as like a good deed, and I, I really wish more of the public had been aware of what they did, but, you know, through donations, they were able to help a number of children who would not have had Christmas. And I'll tell ya, being there, I went to the, to the event, and there were probably ten policemen in uniform, and little kids were assigned to them, and they took them through the store and allowed them to buy presents. They had a little budget, so it was really, really good for the kids, and Nicole Vogler provided a bunch of ladies who, and family members, who wrapped the presents for the kids. So, they went through and, and picked out things, and what I found particularly touching was that some of the kids, it's hard, brought back clothes. You know, they could've bought toys, but they brought back clothes. So, the need is there, and the police really stepped forward and raised, I think it was around fifteen-hundred dollars to, so each of those kids had like a hundred and fifty dollars to go and spend, and, you know, buy something for themselves, and then their parents were given gift cards for groceries. So, it was fabulous. More notice.
Thanks for sharing.
I believe that concludes Councilmember comments for 2019. Madam City Attorney?
Just a little update, the negotiations on the Crystal Hill project do continue. We did get another one contract to sell since the last meeting in place. I've been negotiating with two different attorneys over the last week or so, couple weeks, and then the first notice went out to an individual that the filings will, he doesn't have an attorney, and so anyway, he was sent notice that his eminent domain proceedings will be filed in ten days, and that went out today.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Why, yes, sir, I do. The statement of financial interest, I've had a few calls, I'll send that out most likely this week, but they're not due to be filed until January thirty-first. Think some people thought they were due December thirty-first, so I'll be happy to send those out to those who will need them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So seconded.
If motion's seconded, all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries.
We all wanted to sit around some more.
There's the weirdest pause...